This is our City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, February the 15th, 2024. Our invocation will be done by Pastor JP of Kingdom Builders Ministry, and then the Pledge of Legions will be led by our Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Good evening, everyone. Scripture I have for you tonight is Habakkuk, Chapter Number Two, Verse Number Two, where the word of the Lord said, "The Lord answered and said, 'Write the vision; make it plain upon the tables, that he that read it or run with it may read it.'" Let us pray. Father, we thank you, God, for this meeting tonight, God, for the vision of the progression of this of this community. God, we pray, God, that you will bless the plans that is going forth, God, with all the decisions that is being made right now, God, that you will lead us in the direction that you will have us, that we may continue to be the community and a beacon of light, God, that will call souls to be saved. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. This leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge, and we appreciate you, Pastor JP, for that beautiful invocation. Thank you so much. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. I'll go over a few protocol issues, and then we will get into the meat of the meeting, and hopefully we'll all be on the same page. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight on Monday at our 6:00 PM meeting, which is our voting meeting. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there'll be ample time under the Agenda Item comments from citizens and delegates for you to make your discussions. There are just a few protocol issues, and then we'll follow the agenda that is presented. I would ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you deviate from that warning, when we give you a warning, if you deviate from that, a second deviation will result in us discontinuing the conversation by turning your microphone off. Only one person speaking at a time, please. Please do not applaud or react to speakers, or speak from the audience, or cheer, or carry on a conversation when you are at the microphone. Please address your concerns to the chair when you are at the podium, speaking in the microphone. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings, and if you have any printed materials, please give those to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right. She will make copies and disseminate those copies to us and distribute those copies again to myself and council members. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting, so they will not be disruptive. The agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask questions to help us understand the item better. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. If it is a public hearing, there'll be 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak, but in totality, it comes to 20 minutes. If you do want to talk to us, there are speaker cards outside. Please get those speaker cards. They're blue. They're out on the table. Fill those cards out. Come to the podium and first hand the card to Ms. Vicki Acker, our city clerk, and then go to the podium, and you have five minutes to talk to us. Each person only has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. Address all your informations to the chair, and again, if you have information that you would like, that you need to pass out some pictures or something, we'd be happy to have that. Just give it to Ms. Acker, our city clerk, and she'll disseminate that information to us. And I believe that's all. So at the end of the meeting, if you'd like to talk to us, you can come up under Citizens and Delegates, and as any business, remain to the city of Douglasville. All right. That's a lot of talking, and hopefully we all are on the same page. If you'd like a paper agenda, they are outside. If not, you can follow us on the screen above us. So now we will go to each committee and take care of the business of the city. So now we're in item number five, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Our Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under Finance.
Yes, sir.
Item A, authorize the mayor to sign Change Order Eight with Reed Young LLC for the Jesse Davis Park Project in the amount of $55,029.65 for the purpose of removal and replacement of unsuitable soil at the football field, a relocation of existing electrical conduit for the football field lights, relocation of a water line, and placement of floor drains at the senior center bathrooms. And Mr. Thompson will handle this.
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6695 Church Street. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Thompson.
So, Change Order Eight. The request includes, first, the removal of topsoil that includes organic material discovered at the football field area. As you know, Bermuda grass was initially used for the football field, and typically topsoil is required for that Bermuda grass in order for it to grow. Topsoil, as you know, is not very stable as well and will not meet the compaction needs, limits required by the geotechnical engineer to place the synthetic turf upon. That said, we needed to remove the unsuitable soil and replace it with structural fill to basically support the turf. Secondly, the relocation of existing electrical conduits for the football lighting system were required. It was necessary for the contractor to install drainage pipes four feet within the subsurface of the football field to collect stormwater runoff from the turf system. However, during the installation of that system, the contractor discovered conduit that includes electrical wire for the lighting system. So in order for us to properly continue, in order for the contractor to continue the installation of that drainage system, we had to relocate the conduits one to two feet beneath the pipes. Third, the relocation of an eight-inch waterline. Escavation of a proposed detention pond revealed an unidentified eight-inch waterline. It's typical to find unidentified pipes on construction sites, basically due to inaccuracies with historical records, and sometimes new utilities might be added or modified over time without being updated in the system. So I feel as though this was the case here, and so the contractor plans to relocate the pipe approximately 20 feet north outside of the proposed detention pond area. And then lastly, city staff as well as our design professionals felt the need to implement floor drains for the restrooms located in the senior, proposed senior facility in order to mitigate or address any drainage issues. It also, it helps with cleaning the restroom more efficiently and providing, like, routine maintenance, and also it controls odor. So those are the items listed in this change order. Are there any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any, yes, Madam Mayor, we'll start with you.
Oui.
Yeah, that was a lot.
That's a lot, Mr. Thompson. Okay, so the $55,000, is it in contingency?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're still within the contingency for the entire project?
Yes. Also, I want to point out, too, if you noticed, there was a $35,000 credit that was applied to this change order. So initially, back when we approved Change Order Five in regards to the must-go lighting system upgrade, we included like a small contingency for that project. So now we're going to proceed with using that, that those funds set aside for that contingency to help out with this change order. So that's why you see the $35,000 credit.
Okay, is that on, what page is it on? Three? Oh, three.
It's on page five.
On five.
And you'll see it down there, the sports field allowance.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Engineer Thompson. I did have a couple other questions. So when we, the turf, so where's Bermuda is what was out there, correct?
Yes.
So the Bermuda grass could not support the soil and the drainage and all of that, and when we're going to turf, that'll be able to, it's more substantial, so it'll handle all the drainage? Is that why you're doing all the conduits and stuff?
Yeah, so we had to strip off the Bermuda grass and then also the topsoil that was underneath the Bermuda grass and come back with clean structural fill material, structural soil, so that we'll be able to support loads. And so that's what this change order is in regards to, to remove the unsuitable soils, replace it with structural fill, so that it could support the turf. Say, for instance, there's going to be a lot of foot traffic on that turf, so the structural fill underneath will not, will basically not allow for any divots within that turf area.
Okay. I'm kind of getting it. And the last thing is with the restrooms. I thought we did a renovation, how long ago was the renovation, city manager, for Alice Hawthorne, the restrooms? At that time, we didn't put whatever structure we needed to, infrastructure for restrooms and the drainage detention ponds and all of that?
That was all just interior, just for that one facility?
Okay.
So Marcus, go ahead.
So this is everything, it's not just the senior citizen center?
No, this is for the, just the new, the new proposed senior center restrooms. We're going to go ahead and incorporate those, you know, those little square floor drains that you may see in, like, restroom areas?
Okay.
In order to mitigate slip, for slip hazards and stuff like that.
Okay, okay, I understand. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Yes, small slap on the wrist to the MEP engineers on that one. That's a pretty standard detail that you should have included. I mean, that's, on any public restroom, you should always have floor drains to begin with, so that got overlooked. But luckily, it's the smallest financial item on the list, so it's not that, as big of a deal, I guess. We just have to point that out to them next time, on the next go-around, on the next restrooms that we build. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Anyone else down?
I think Terry got the question answered about the other drains. But in the beginning, they had them scheduled for us another type of floor drains in the beginning, so now we had to go back and replace the floor drains?
No, there wasn't none included at all.
Really?
Yeah, for the senior facility.
Huh. That's, that's, all right.
All right. Any other questions? I'm just thankful that the price tag was...
Within the contingency.
Yeah. Didn't have anything to do with rocks, that's good. If there are no other questions, I don't, I don't see a reason not to put this on consent agenda. Is there any, everybody okay with that?
I don't see any opposition.
Okay.
Looks good.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, and Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight.
Thank you so much, Coach. Thank you, Engineer Thompson. We appreciate that. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you so much, sir. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Personnel and Organization Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a few items this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
And the first is to consider whether to accept the petition of Mason Melfris to annex 21.3 acres of land located near the northeast intersection of Malone Road and Linecrest Drive in Land Lot 646, District 18, Section 2, Parcel ID 06461820001, 06461820002, and 06461820003, and Land Lot 647, District 18, Section 2, Parcel ID 6, excuse me, 06471820001, and 06471820002, and Land Lot 703, District 1, Section 3, Parcel ID 07030113006, Douglas County, Georgia, into the city limits of Douglasville. And Ms. Shayla Reed is going to talk to us about this item this evening.
Okay, a lot of numbers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Shayla Reed, Community Development Director. The item before you is a, I guess, acknowledgement that staff has received a proposed request to submit an annexation application. This particular property is located along Malone Road and Linecrest Drive. It's a total of 21.3 acres. Amongst the 21.3 acres, 7.2 is within the city limits already, and currently, there's four single-family detached structures located on the site, and the other area is considered to be wooded. And then they're proposing to have 171 town home units. I will mention that we have had conversations regarding the New Horizons Community or Ward Three with the missing middle components and identifying how we would like to see single, excuse me, triplex, duplex, and townhomes in that particular area, and so this does complement those different initiatives that we did mention previously. And that concludes my report, Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify for us all that this is, we are deciding at this point only if we're going to accept the application. This is not an actual annex. So if we decide to allow them to make this application, then we will not actually see the annex and rezoning until probably summertime. So just for some clarification there, okay. And did you tell us is the applicant here?
He is, yes.
And did, before he asked, or before we see if he wants to come down, Council, did you guys have any questions of Ms. Shayla Reed?
A quick question, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Director Reed. So when I drove by this, I know this is just for the annexation, and there are four homes currently and seven acres in the city limits, within the 21 acres, correct?
Correct.
And it's near Gateway Village, is it, that would be the backside of Gateway Village?
So Gateway Village fronts Dallas Highway on the opposite side of the street, so it's going to be on the Malone side, where it's basically opposite side of Highway Five, excuse me, highway, I'm standing backwards, Dallas Highway, I'm standing backwards, sorry.
Dr. Burdany, when we met with Gateway Village, was this one of the ones we were talking about?
When we met with Gateway Village, and thank you, Madam Mayor, Gateway Village was, it was down past the Marathon.
Okay.
So my question about this one, is it, is this behind the Shell Station? I'm just trying to look how...
Yeah, because I couldn't get it either. That's why I thought it was near Gateway.
And it looks like it's very close to, like, in between Hunter's Ridge?
It's past, it's down Malone Road all the way to, almost to the intersection.
Oh, so this is the, this is what the county didn't, didn't want, from my understanding. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to speak, can I speak, can I have the...
Did he already apply to the county?
Yes. I just want to make sure the correct location. Is it where the Marathon gas station is?
I don't believe so.
But give us your name and address.
Avery Ward, HRC Engineers, 6554 Church Street. I don't believe it is where the...
It's not that far down?
I don't think so.
Is this close to Hunter's Ridge subdivision?
I'm not sure which one Hunter's Ridge is. It's very close. It's not too far from 92.
Could you please give us your name and address for the record? I apologize.
Avery Ward with HRC Engineers, 6554 Church Street.
Can you give us some direction from my, what I'm looking at? If I pass the fire station on 92 traveling north and you take a right on Malone?
This will be, there's a road that comes in that's got a really big subdivision on your right, so it's going to be right past that on your left before you've, it'll be the first subdivision, before the first subdivision on your left.
So that would be Gateway Village?
I'm not sure what it's called.
No, that would be, that's the Hunter Ridge, past Hunter Ridge.
Past Hunter's Ridge, into the industrial area, close to the...
It's before Hunter's Ridge.
Yeah, before you get to Hunter Ridge.
Don Stanley.
At your stop sign.
It's part of Stanley, yes.
Don Stanley, okay, all right. I'm sorry. Let me take my comments back about the county. That was a different area, that was way past, that was in the county on Maroni Mill. Is that correct?
Yeah, this project has not been presented to the county.
That doesn't, okay.
You said this project has not been presented to the county?
It has not been presented to the county.
And I apologize. Let me take that back and make sure I...
Can you tell us why you're choosing to annex into the city rather than into the county?
I can't speak for Mason, who, he wasn't able to make it tonight, but I think they, they like the idea of being in the city better, just because of the PUD and the use, and I think it would, it kind of fits with the Horizon plan, like Shayla was mentioning.
Council, did you guys have any questions of the applicant while he's up here? Yes, sir. Yes, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll clarify with legal before I jump into this. Because this is an annexation request, we have a little bit more discretion as to what we ask of the potential project. Is that not correct? I mean, versus a, just simply a development plan, where a lot of that's already set.
There is a, yeah, go ahead.
This is simply a request to consider an annexation. After you take the petition, you'll have to get consent with the county to give them a chance to object from the source. Then it will come to you, assuming that objections or the objections are solved, it will come to you for a vote.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Probably, I don't know, 120, 150 days.
Okay. Make sure everybody understands that. I'm grabbing my soapbox right now, setting it up. I see, I see one entrance into this development, and I know there's a fire lane in the back, which I'll assume is just simply for emergency access, not for traffic that goes out into the whole lane. But once again, the whole development is a cul-de-sac, and even though you do have room along Malone Road to provide two entrances into this development, and so, once again, I'm coming back to my statement about, you know, creating connectivity in the city and creating walkable spaces and amenable developments, we're trying to get, some of us are trying to get away from one entrance in and out on development, so it would be, I think, it would behoove you to look at this, to look at the plan you've got. And I like the idea, you've got some alleyways in there, and you've got, looks like potential rear access, you've got pocket parks, you've got a lot of nice features in there, but I think that having two entrances into this development would be, make it a much stronger and more agreeable plan for us in the city.
Sure. Okay, yeah, we can look at that, assuming everything, the driveway spacing meets on that road, so, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
It's good feedback. Thank you.
Yes, another comment, too.
I'm having a hard time seeing fingers tonight. I'm sorry, y'all.
Yeah, Malone Road is, and I know we do need housing, and I do like all the amenities you have. Malone Road doesn't have sidewalks, and, you know, just the, you've got the townhomes right there, the childcare center, and just a cluster of where we'd like to see pedestrians walk, and right there with Highway 92 not being completed, I know we have a date for that being done. I'd like to see the traffic, I mean, the road be able to handle this.
Yeah, traffic.
Yes.
Thank you. Coach, did you have a question?
So since this is just an application for annexation, down the road, we'll have a little bit more say-so and conversation about any development plan and so on and so forth. Is that correct?
Yes, and keeping us on track.
Right. Well, I could just hear Councilman, former Councilman Adams now, and this is just an application for an annexation.
We're doing forecasting.
But, you know, earlier today, I had a lot of the same questions, but I was told that that was the case.
Right.
Anyway, that's all I...
Better to talk about it before it gets put in the oven.
Yeah.
Okay.
To discuss the ingredients first.
Thank you for that. Okay. Well, folks, do you guys have any other questions then for the applicant?
I do want to say to the applicant, thank you for wanting to be in the city. That's a big deal.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we're excited for development. We're growing.
We are. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. Council, it seems like we may still have some more discussion on this, so I don't want to put this on the consent agenda, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, moving along, then, we do have one more item, guys. Sorry, we're going to reload. Yep. And we are going to look at adopting a resolution to establish the city of Douglasville New Horizons Community and adopt the map for the New Horizons Community District. And Ms. Shayla Reed is going to talk to us about this item as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. This particular item is recognizing the Ward Three area that we have had different plans and studies. In particular, there was a marketing study where the community had a lot of outreach. They have identified this area as New Horizons Community, and so the city is before, staff has asked that we adopt this area as identified to be New Horizons, as the official name of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Council, did you guys have any questions?
Yes, is this, like, I thought we had already adopted New Horizons, so is this, like, what's different?
This is a district map, Councilwoman Burdany. We never adopted the district map, very much like we did with the downtown map. We have some alternative zoning that we adopted to go in the area, but we don't have an official designated area to create a map so that we can institute certain things like we are doing with the downtown area.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So you will, this is the district map.
Okay, great. I'm sure the New Horizons Community is really excited about this. I'd like to see the New Horizons sign come with it. We have that sign coming, forthcoming.
We'll work on that, yes, ma'am.
Good answer. We're not the New Horizons if we don't have, like, an entry, you know what I mean? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good answer.
Madam Mayor, did you have a question?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. We're excited, of course, and I know we talked about before, you know, what this would entail, like, the neighborhood, commercial, coffee shops, all those types of things for zoning, and how it would be mixed-use. But I'm still, we saw the video. What happened to the video? Has it been...
It's saved, like, on the website. On the New Horizons.
Wait a minute, what? Tell me again, Deputy City Manager. It's been placed on a website. I thought we, okay. And is that for the developers as well? Like, have we sent that out to developers?
Yes, ma'am. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. So as you know, a couple of months ago, probably about four or five months ago now, I came before you, and I showed you a video of the New Horizons that we would use for developers, commercial, residential, to introduce them to the neighborhood and the community, so they know they can come and have business in that area. So since then, I've worked with staff, and we've created a New Horizons website. So I just received that final website from Mr. Jason Post today, so we're reviewing that to make sure there's no errors, and that video is being placed on that website. So from there, we'll create marketing packages specifically for that commercial and residential retail that the residents are looking for in that area, and so when they get that package, they'll also get the video, they'll also get the website, and they'll be able to click and see what all it entails and what New Horizons looks like, so they can bring their business to that area.
Okay, because it was very specific, and it was a well-written and produced video, and so, you know, even for the Economic Development Authority or Douglas, just, I don't even know what the whole Douglas Economic Development Chamber, all of that.
Yes, ma'am. Elevate Douglas, yes, ma'am. So they've been privy to the information.
So they'll send the video to them, so that we can, Mr. Humphries, Economic Development Director, can send that out to the state or whomever else who wants to, you know, invest in, into the community.
Yes.
Into New Horizons. Okay, I just, I know the video was ready, so I was just waiting for it to come out.
Now have a video and a website.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Were there any other...
That is very exciting. I'd like to ask also of staff, the New Horizons Community Group, they meet every fourth Monday. Although Councilman Davis and I serve in that ward, we do not have a vote with that board, so I would definitely would like to ask the staff to reach out to either Jennifer So, I would definitely would like to ask the staff to reach out to either Jennifer Perkins or Marilyn Clark. And I keep them abreast, but it's really nice if staff can do that, 'cause we don't have a vote, we just do attend those meetings.
Yes, ma'am, I have their contact information, so I'll definitely reach out.
Thank you, they're gonna be excited. All right, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Were there any other questions, yes, sir?
Yeah, quick question. What was the reason that the boundary stops at Malone Road? And it doesn't include, there's a little bit of sliver of the city just north of that. Is there a reason why that area is not included?
So, we identified the areas that had the traditional residential and commercial in that area. And I believe this is the, the boundaries that were spelled out in that marketing study. So, we just mimic that study that the outreach was considered in.
Nobody's, from those neighborhoods, have contacted wanting to be included as part of it?
I have not received the request, no, sir.
Yeah, Councilman, Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to say too, when you pass that, you're getting into, there are two developments there that are county. Those two subdivisions are county and pass that, you're like right into Paulding. Although Gateway Village is in the city, that, they're just, that part is in the city, the rest of it is county and into Paulding.
Yeah, I'm looking, you can see the boundary on there, that's why I was wondering though why, if there was a reason why they're not being included as part of New Horizons. It's just not really felt to be part of the core area, is it?
Well, they don't, they really don't know.
That subdivision on the left is county.
No, toward the right though, up there, is that, 'cause it's shown, it's shown within the city boundary. Wellington Court area.
That's county.
It's showing up as city on here. Is it, is it just a map not drawn right?
That's, um, close to, is that, let me look.
If you're looking just north of Malone Road, you'll see there's several neighborhoods.
There's one subdivision in the county there.
Yeah.
About Hunter Ridge.
Stone Ridge Drive, is that, that's county?
No, that is, um.
That's city, but it's not part of the, not part of the district.
You're, and you're really like, really, they know about this, they're just, that's really backing up against, like, one, couple of steps over is county.
Right.
Yeah, and it's just like the downtown, you know, that, the area is just a core area.
I'm just, I just want to be sure we're covering all bases, because as I said, I mean, it's clearly, it's in the city, it's on the north side, but if they don't really feel themselves as being part of New Horizons, then, you know, it's,
Let me ask.
Not for us to, not for me to say that it should be part of it.
Right, so, this is, this is a district map that we're adopting. It's not to say that in the future that we could add, is, am I correct about that?
Correct, and it's not, the idea, I think, I think the mayor was bringing up the, the point, we have a concise downtown district map. Doesn't mean that if you live on Rose Avenue that you, you're not downtown.
Right.
You're downtown, it's just you're not part of that map. The purpose of adopting the map was the marketing study and was also to encourage development. So, yes, we're creating a New Horizons Community District, but it, you know, I hate to say this word, but it's almost like creating an overlay district so you can help incentivize development zoning, not to, we're not creating a neighborhood.
Right, yeah, 'cause a coffee shop wouldn't be on Malone Road.
Only people can create neighborhoods.
Correct, so, it's not to exclude anyone, but it's to, and the other purpose was to get as close to downtown as possible, to take advantage of, of that level of momentum and to encourage development where in and around Dallas Highway and those areas where you, you want to promote commercial, to help to support the neighborhoods. Because ultimately, the neighborhoods should stay traditional, single-family residential neighborhoods in those areas that you're mentioning.
Right, and, and also, if you take in consideration when this was, when individuals were asked those specific questions, these are also like the inner line pockets of where there aren't, like, within walking distance of,
Parks.
Parks, I mean, that, just fresh fruits and vegetables or even just convenience stores. So, when you go outside of that, you do see that, on down Cave Springs Road, you see that. But in these areas, you have a lot of, a lot of things that are just not there, so it just encourages economic.
The more and most fringe actually could probably more easily go up to Paulding County.
Yes, and that's a very good question you asked, but these were very defined questions and they did some really good study, but that's a good question, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys, for that information. Okay, if there weren't, were there any more questions on this? Like, do we feel good about this, I guess? Yeah, would y'all like to go ahead and put this on the agenda?
Consent agenda, please, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all I had this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Inn and Director Reed, we appreciate that report. We'll move on then to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's also chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, we have no business tonight.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. I saw you doing DJing and keeping everyone together at Blue Rose last night for Valentine's, you did a great job. We'll move on then to Public Safety Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdantley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have two items tonight. The first item is to hold a hearing pursuant to City of Douglasville Code of Ordinance, Section 10-24B, to consider revocation of the alcohol beverage license of Vicin Ventures LLC, DBA Highlander's Tavern and Grill.
Okay. Ms. Attorney Jordan?
Yes, our staff attorney, Miranda Jordan, will be presenting on behalf. Is the representative for Vicin Ventures LLC available? Thank you. All right, if you'll please come, thank you for coming forward, you state your name, please, sir.
You want Ms., you want the attorney to go first or Mr., Mr. Fowler?
Ms. Miranda Howe, would you like to proceed? Mr. Fowler, introduce himself.
I do have a motion, if I may, but I was gonna wait until the appropriate time.
Ms. Jordan?
If Mr. Fowler would like to give his name and address for the record, please.
Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 49, Douglasville. Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of Highlander's Port Bar.
Thank you, would you like for me to proceed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, thank you. The purpose of this hearing is for the City Council to consider whether to take action on including whether to suspend or revoke the alcoholic beverage consumption on premises licensed of Vicin Venture LLC, DBA Highlander's Tavern and Grill. The Agent Outlet Manager for Vicin's Vendor Ventures LLC, DBA Highlander's Tavern and Grill is Mr. Nicholas McCullough. The City of Douglasville Finance Department mailed a letter to Vicin's Venture LLC, DBA Highlander's Tavern and Grill on February the 5th, 2024, to comply with the hearing notice requirements provided for in Section 10-24 of the City of Douglasville's Code of Ordinance. At this time, I would like to ask our Assistant City Attorney if she'd like to swear in those that we'll be representing.
At this time, if I can get everyone who will be testifying at this hearing, including those for the respondent to stand, Ms. Callen and Chief Sparks. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? If so, say "I do." Thank you, you may be seated. And Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to call Karen Callen. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Karen Callen, 6695 Church Street, Assistant City Manager.
In addition to your role as Assistant City Manager, you are the Director of the Finance Department, correct?
Correct.
And the Finance Department is in charge of alcohol licenses for the City of Douglasville, correct?
Yes.
Was the owner and Agent Outlet Manager served with notice of the hearing at least five days before today's date?
Yes.
Was the letter mailed on February 5th, 2024?
Yes.
Was the advertisement in the Douglas County Sentinel advertised on February 3rd and February 10th of 2024?
Yes.
Thank you, I don't have any further questions at this time. And I would like to call Chief Sparks at this time. You can remain where you are or you can stand at the podium, your choice.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Gary Sparks, Chief of Police, City of Douglasville.
And have you been fully briefed on all matters related to the alcohol license of Highlander's Tavern and Grill?
Yes.
As a law enforcement officer, are you familiar with the differences between Georgia IDs for those over 21 and under 21?
I, I am, I, I am.
And the license for those that are over 21, is that a horizontal license?
Yes, over 21 are horizontal and verticals for under, under 21. The main thing to need to look at is the date of birth.
And the horizontal and vertical differences make it easy for anyone looking at the license to determine if the person is under or over 21?
Yes.
And does it also stay in bold writing, under 21 on the vertical license?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it policy and the law that if an operation to identify underage sales takes place, the underage purchaser must use a real ID?
Yes, all, all of our undercover operation dealing with the sale of alcohol or cigarettes or anything to people under 21, we make sure that they have the proper identification. And then we all know if that establishment is going through the proper procedures.
Did the Douglasville Police Department send in a confidential informant on December 19th, 2023, to Highlander's Tavern?
Yes, we did, we had had information about that location, selling to minors and, and other things being done in that location. So, we set our operation, undercover operation as well as the Sheriff's Department.
And was the person that you sent in to purchase alcohol at Highlander's on December 19th, 2023, under the age of 21?
Yes.
And did that underage purchaser use their real ID?
Yes.
Was that underage purchaser carded at the time of the sale?
I think they looked at the card and they saw, anyway.
All right, I'm gonna fast forward to January 20th of 2024. Can you tell me about the actions of the cook on that date, January 20th, 2024, in regards to cocaine sales?
We had, we had information and we had people working in that location. We had information that the cook was selling cocaine and so we got with the Sheriff's Department and the Sheriff's Department went in there and they videoed in there with people openly smoking drugs and workers going to the back doors smoking, pretending to be marijuana. And they lay, set up an operation where one of the deputies bought some marijuana and they, and they ran across the, came in contact with the, with the cook. And they surve, surveillance was placed on the cook and the cook was getting ready to depart that location and, and they stopped the cook and they found cocaine and other drug paraphernalia.
And they, the stop that was made on the cook was a traffic stop that same evening?
Yes.
Was there another individual with the cook in that vehicle?
Yes.
And did that individual have, was that individual at Highlander's that night as well?
That individual was there as well and all of this is under surveillance and they do have recordings of what they did.
Okay, and you mentioned recordings. Why are those recordings not available to be seen today as part of this hearing?
That's an ongoing investigation.
So, there are potential for breaches of that investigation and there's also potential for the safety of officers to be in jeopardy as a result of the?
Yes, ma'am, and the, the cook is going to, was charged in all of this, the trial, all that got to go. And like I said, it's, we, we continuing and we gonna continue until we stop all of this for the best we can.
Were any officers that night offered by any patrons or staff to partake in marijuana usage?
Undercover officers purchasing marijuana in the location. And officers go smoke, so, yes. Everything that we found, everything that we had information on at that location, we found to be true.
So, I'm gonna back up to the evening of December 9th of 2023. What was the, what was the ambiance of Highlander's when they, when officers walked into the restaurant?
When they walked in, they observed people smoking marijuana, drug, drug deals going down in there. Some of the, the workers were observed going to the back door and, and firing up, appeared from the undercover operator that they were smoking weed in, in there. And they, and the undercover operation officer was also asked if they wanna buy some weed.
Were there patrons that were rolling marijuana cigarettes?
Yes.
Officers observed marijuana cigarettes tucked behind patrons' ears?
Yes.
Was there any corrective action taken by the employees of Highlander's when all this was going on?
No, it's just, it appeared as just another day of operation.
And all this was in open view of employees?
Walked right in, that's what was going on.
And all law enforcement officers are trained to detect the smell of marijuana in their training, correct?
Yes, we have control, control burns.
And as you, are you as a law enforcement officer familiar with gang signs and symbols?
Some, yes.
And would you be able to identify hand signals, bandanas?
Yes.
As, as gang signs or symbols?
The signs, yes, some, and the colors, yes. Because we did have information that some of these motorcycle clubs was hanging out at some of these locations in, in the city and the county. And that's why we are presently looking at that.
And is there any blood criminal street gang activity that has been witnessed at Highlander's Tavern?
We had information that we had some Bloods in, in that location.
And can you explain what, what you mean by Bloods when you say that?
Well, it's a group that's maybe, you may have heard, they come out of California, they represent the red. They got, have a pointed stars and they have an ideology. And, and the ideology is a, a one that is very detrimental to, to our city. Selling drugs, sell drugs and, you know, drive-by shootings and things of this nature. We've, we've probably arrested over 50 or more, not only Bloods, but Crips and Ghostface gangsters, motorcycle club people that's coming here, we have arrested several and we gonna continue to do it.
And all of the investigation took place originating from anonymous tips regarding drug use and underage alcohol sales to minors, is that right?
That's correct, we received the information and a couple of times my desk and I gave it to our special operation unit and they went to work and, again, what we were told, we found out to be true.
Okay, at this time, I don't have any further questions for Chief Sparks. I would ask that Mr. Fowler be allowed an opportunity to make a cross-examination if necessary.
Madam Mayor, maybe Counsel or Assistant Counsel, I was gonna make an opening statement to ask for this matter to be deferred for a couple of weeks. I was hired yesterday, I met with my clients for the first time today. I recognize that the city has concerns about the conduct that you've just heard described. I'm not prepared to, to cross-examine the chief. I understand the great concern the city has, in fact, it's the same concern I have. Never frequented a bar in my entire life, don't drink at all. And I'm concerned, just like everybody is, that the right thing get done. I met these folks and if I may just intervene to make a brief opening statement, which would be normal in a hearing, and tell you from our perspective what's going on. May I do that?
It's up to the Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, please proceed.
Well, first, Nick McCullough is here, he is the owner. He has owned Highlander's for 15 years. They have had a alcohol permit for 15 years in Douglas County, they've never had a citation. It was first over by Sam and Roscoe's, but then about eight years ago, they went to their current location. No citations during that entire time. They use a program called Bar Metrics or Bar Metrics to instruct their personnel as to how to check for licenses. More on vertical versus horizontal licenses in just a moment. But they instruct their personnel about how to deal with the very problems that the chief has just been talking about. has just been talking about. And I'll say this, though I've never frequented their location, there is a judge from Carroll County that goes there all the time. Some of the personnel that are employed by the city as police officers go there regularly. Some of the people that the mayor and I know from the Water and Sewer Authority regularly attend there because it's a sports bar. Now, they serve alcohol. I guess they serve sweet tea, which would be appropriate for me. But it is a location that people have been frequenting and they are popular in the city of Douglasville. And then all of a sudden, the sky falls and they're doing all this misconduct. And, and my clients will testify, we hope, the next time you convene this hearing, that they're not aware of these things. The one who is principally responsible for the day-to-day operation is Nick's brother Kyle, who is here. He is essentially the on-site manager. And he insists on no underage service. And I've got some documents to show you about that in just a moment. He insists on no misconduct. And in fact, there are occasions when people who are undesirable come to locations like this and they give out, in cooperation with the city of Douglasville, they give out criminal trespass warrants. And what it says is, you're not welcome at this establishment anymore. And here are, over a four-year period of time, here are about twenty of those. They do this because they don't want to be here before you, being publicly embarrassed by having their reputable establishment as being a organization, that is, a venue that permits this kind of thing to go on. Furthermore, it's been said that there are a lot of calls to their location, to Highlanders. And we have, they have, within the last forty-eight hours, obtained from the courthouse calls, nine-one-one calls. And what was said, you didn't hear it testified to, but it may come out at a later time, that there are a number of calls, more so than in other restaurants. As it turns out, a restaurant that's relatively close by has twice as many as this. But when you look at this database, if you happen to check it before you finally vote on this, what you'll see is that many of these are what's referred to as zone patrols, where they just drop by to check and see what's happened. What you'll notice if you happen to look at those records, if they're offered to you as evidence, what you'll see is that many times they've called because someone has had a medical issue or something of that nature. My point about all of that is, they are not trying to violate the law. They are cooperating with the city of Douglasville to insist that the law is carried out. Another person who's here tonight that could testify is Ms. Brandy Woodsmall. She is the manager of the servers. She has never been cited for all the time she's been there. She checks IDs for every user. And what she noted was exactly what the chief said. You got to be twenty-one years old to be served. But what she also explained to me earlier is that this is a smoking bar. And nobody under twenty-one years of age can even come into the bar. And yet, what happened in this instance is a twenty-year-old girl was brought into the bar by the police department, violating state law to essentially, I hate to say it, but it's almost like it's entrapment. She will testify, as would every server, that they know they say under twenty-one. But what happens is, some people who have suddenly attained the age of twenty-one still use these as their IDs. Every one of them is trained to look at the date of birth. And that's what happens at this restaurant. Now, quickly, with respect to the incident regarding underage consumption on the date that was mentioned by the Assistant City Attorney a moment ago, December the nineteenth, that girl's name is Lauren Earp. She's twenty-five. She was the server that purportedly did what had been described. What she had indicated to me when I spoke with her briefly today was that she has now been cited herself and will, I presume, go to a court. So she spoke with the lawyer that she had to hire. And she was, said, you cannot be here to testify because you're gonna have to testify in court. But what she said is, she always checks and that she did in that circumstance. I don't know what happened. All I know is the city sent somebody twenty years old into the restaurant in violation of state law, essentially entrapping this client that's got a near-perfect record in the city of Douglasville. If alcohol sales are stopped, that company will go out of business at that location. I don't think that's what the city wants. There needs to be a full and thoroughgoing investigation of what happened. But I don't know how we do it in this setting. And so what I'd mentioned to Joel and to Miranda earlier is, may we have the opportunity so that we can explore with you those things that are being said about us? Now, briefly, on the night of January the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, three people were arrested, none of them on sight of these premises. Tyler Blair, he is a part-time cook. Alan Henry and Lisa Thornton. Those people have not been convicted. They've been charged. There's a good reason to be suspicious. I'm sure that's right, but there are no convictions. And what the city, at least at this point, wants you to vote on Monday night is to shut down this restaurant without convictions because there's some suspicion that activity is going on there. Let me just say this. If somebody would just called Nick and said, don't you know what's going on? When I spoke with him, the sense of it I got was, they have systems in place that stop that. For heaven's sakes, they have city of Douglasville policemen eating there and enjoying beverages and watching sports. What I will note is this. On the night in question, this genuine Alan Henry was in the next-door bar called Per Se. The evidence that I've quickly been able to discover is that he left that bar late, late, late at night, when he should have been at home. He left that bar. He went to the parking lot of Highlanders, did not go inside. In the parking lot, he met a woman by the name of Lisa, who was also arrested. They met in her car. Something must have happened going on in that vehicle. But then he left her car, two AM, when they are closed, and went back to Per Se. They later left, based on what I had been told, and they were arrested somewhere in the county at some location. I'm sure the chief knows that. I don't know it. But my point was, they have not been convicted. It was not on this client's property. I am stunned at what the chief said about things that are going on with respect to informants and marijuana usage and so forth. At this point, unless we know more, we're talking about taking away a license based on what, we can't even defend ourselves because we can't talk to or hear testimony from the people that would give evidence to you. We respectfully ask you, please, to let us reschedule this. Let me meet with the chief and let's try to get to the bottom of it. I used to hear the former commission chair lady say, Douglas County is open for business. I heard the mayor say, or perhaps the chairman of this committee say, welcome to the city. We welcome you here. And from my experience, in fact, I'm filing an annexation petition within the next few days. We want to be in the city of Douglasville for a host of the reasons that you know full well. One of which has to do with what this client has given the opportunity to do, and that is to sell spiritous liquors. But we do it in a way that does not violate the law. We respectfully believe that it would be premature to go forward unless we have the opportunity to further prepare our defense. So with all due respect, I'll defer any cross-examination of the chief and ask you to please defer this. Thank you. Madam Mayor, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Fowler. Attorney Jordan, are there any other comments that you have before I open to the mayor and counsel?
I would say that because we have begun the hearing, that it should continue, that witnesses, there are still witnesses to be called. Certainly, for my part, to call Mr. Nicholas McCullough, but also witnesses that Mr. Fowler may want to call. I would just ask that the hearing, hearing continue today. Counsel would be allowed to take action on Monday or to make any kind of deferral of action until a later date. The notice requirements were met. It is not up to the city to make Mr. McCullough's case for him or to allow him additional time. That is not provided for in the code. The Douglasville Police Department has asked that this matter be expedited to ensure that future issues are not coming up with Highlanders. And so, again, it is the discretion of counsel if you would like to defer to a later date. But we would have to wait until Monday to make that decision at a voting meeting.
Right. I'd like to hear comments from our mayor and counsel. Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. This is a very sensitive and serious issue. I know the way the measure reads is for revocation. And we did have similar situations, not as egregious as this, with one of our other restaurants in the city, with Crew and some other restaurants. And we did have not a total revocation, but we did have a suspension of their alcohol license. So I'm not certain, Madam Chair, if you, that's just a recommendation. Maybe if we will have to, you know, preview to more information, if that could be one of the measures as well for you to consider in this committee, is maybe a suspension of a timeframe, as we've done with other restaurants that violated our ordinances with, in regards to alcohol and selling.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do I have, I think Mr. Dodson has a comment. Yes, sir.
Well, before going forward, it may be appropriate to deal with the issue of the continuous Mr. Fowler's requested, the ordinance calls for a minimum notice of, I think, five days. Now, in this case, you've met that, but in reality, that's a pretty short fuse. We have granted short continuances in the past. You certainly wouldn't want to try to continue the case until the outcome of the criminal proceedings because that may take a year.
Right.
But a short contingency would not be out of the question. Particularly in light of the fact Mr. Fowler's only been hired the last day or two and hasn't had a chance to subpoena witnesses or do much of an investigation. If you, if you wish to continue it, I simply wish to reserve the right of the city to present additional evidence if this case is continued to, to another date.
Madam Chair, the dates would be February twenty-ninth and March fourth, our next round of council meetings. But it's your prerogative to either do those dates or extend it to the next round.
So my question to our attorney too is, to continue to those dates, does that mean that we stop the hearing at this time and do not hear the witnesses that you were going to cross, Ms. Johnson?
That, that would be at counsel's discretion. But again, as Mr. Dodson has said, the city would need to reserve the right to present evidence again or, and/or present additional evidence at such time as the hearing takes place.
If you're going to continue it, I don't see that it would be in the best interest of the city to present more testimony tonight.
At this time. Do you have any other comments from our council members? Councilman Davis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm, I stand behind my chief and staff. And sometimes you have to put things to bed. This is Douglasville. This is not any other major city. And Chief Attia, we don't play the radio here in our city. So I stand behind my chief and the staff.
Councilman Estes?
I hear you, Councilman Davis. I'm really torn on this. I mean, everything that we have heard from the chief is incredibly concerning. Some very serious issues. But it's also a very serious thing to consider revoking a license for, for a business in this city. I, I think it makes sense to, to accept Mr. Fowler's suggestion and defer this for a short time. I think it helps both sides because the two stories that we're hearing are so incredibly totally opposite that it, something's off. And I'm not comfortable making a decision to revoke the license right now when, when there is such a disparity in the stories that I'm hearing. So I, I would, I would want to, to defer. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I likely will not be in attendance for those two particular council meetings. And this is certainly something that I would like to be in attendance for. But I certainly don't want to hold up the business or the jurisdictional process. So if, if it's acceptable to push it one set of meetings past that, with the, with the acceptance of the entire council, that would, that would please me. But if the council wants to move it forward, you know, I can accept not being here. But it does seem like something you think, I would think we'd want the entire city council present for. But that's up to you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, could I speak my mo- Madam Chair, on that date, I'm like, Council Miller, I will not be here on that date. I have a, born on leap year, so I have a.
Oh, that's right. You've got plans.
I have plans.
It's National Leagues of Cities.
What's the next round after the twenty-ninth and?
March fourteenth and eighteenth.
As public safety chair, I just want to say, we take it very, very serious in regards to alcohol and, and drug use. When a applicant comes before the mayor and council to apply for a alcohol license, all of the indications are there in regards to what is to be followed and what is not. My question is, if we're going to, if, if it is to desire to the mayor and counsel I'm hearing is to delay this, is there alcohol still being served in this restaurant?
Chief Sparks?
Presidentally, yes. That's why we here and, and they asking for you all to let them to continue. I didn't come in here making up a story.
No, we know.
I came in here telling you the truth. And then they can tell you all kind of things that, that they have done or doing. But they didn't do it that day.
With all due respect with, to Attorney Fowler, thank you so much for your request. Because alcohol has been, is still being served and the evidence, I hear what you're saying, it's on both sides. I am not pleased to hear under twenty-one. And I'm, I mean, just being served alcohol, I understand what you're saying. I hear from our senior attorney Dodson. And I'm also hearing from Ms. Miranda Johnson, who's done research on this. And I heard her say loudly that she would like, would like to proceed. Is that, is that my understanding, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, that I would like to proceed with this right now. Next person?
I would just first ask if Mr. Fowler had any cross-examination.
And let me just put on the record, I, I think it's an unconstitutional deprivation to force us to proceed without the ability to have our witnesses here. The witness who purportedly served this underage person refuses to testify because she's charged with a crime. And our hands are tied behind our back. With all due respect.
Thank you. So the witness that you were going to question, Ms. Jordan, is not present?
No, ma'am. She refused to come tonight.
She refused to. Okay.
Her name is Lauren Earp, like Wyatt Earp. And she is the accused who has said to have looked at the vertical ID card and checked the date. And what we find out now is that she's twenty years old and you're not supposed to send a twenty-year-old into a smoking bar. And that happened. With all due respect, I understand the chief and he and I.
Well, and, and respectfully, the applicant, I'm sorry, Highlanders, when they were an applicant in two thousand and eleven, they represented on their al-
they represented on their alcohol license application that they would not be a smoking establishment. So I can present that to all of you. I have a copy this evening. They have always represented. And they represented that everything in their application was true and correct and signed it in front of a notary public. So again, any mention of this being a smoking establishment should be fully disregarded by council.
Ms. Miranda, excuse me.
Excuse me, mister, excuse me, Councilman Davis. Mr. Fowler, did you want to, Attorney Fowler, did you want to respond?
Well, I'll have to ask my client. If we're forced to proceed tonight, I learned, I got this case this afternoon. I learned this afternoon it's a smoking establishment. If they have not followed some regulation, I was not aware of that. Mr. McCullough, if you force him to testify, I will explain.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes, and I will officially put this on the record with the clerks. This is the full and complete application for license that was completed in 2011 that was signed by Mr. Nicholas McCullough. On the very first page, it asks, is this establishment smoking or non-smoking? And non-smoking is clearly checked as that box. So I will keep this on the record with the clerk's office. And I'm happy to show a copy to Mr. Fowler as well.
I don't need to see it.
Thank you.
That would include, that would include cigarette smoking and of course, any kind of illegal smoking such as marijuana.
And we'll make sure you get a receive a copy, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you. So am I to proceed with the cross-examination of the chief? Or will they be voted the council to defer?
It's up to Madam Chair. We are...
Yes, we heard from Councilman Davis, Mayor Protem, the Madam Mayor. Do we have any other council members?
I didn't make my decision.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
I'm being Solomon.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we're going to split the baby. So Chief, just for the record, we know your character is impeccable. We're not putting you under scrutiny and saying that you are saying anything that's untrue. We're just trying to gather all the information before we make a decision. So no one is saying, and me in particular, that you are saying anything that's untrue. We definitely believe you.
Yes, and I understand that my officers did this operation. I didn't do it. I'm the chief.
Yes, sir.
And when we started going down the path of, when our people going out and doing their job and doing the work and we don't get no positive recourse, then things continue to build up.
Yes, sir.
And we got a complaint.
Yes, sir, we understand. And we know the core values of the police department. So we know that they all fall under you. But that was, I just want to say that, Madam.
Yes.
So we'll go ahead with Councilman Watts. The chairperson wanted to hear from each council person whether they wanted to defer or wanted to continue with this evening to give Mr. Fowler...
A chance to...
A chance to respond.
Well, first, let me say that one of my biggest concerns in all the information we've received tonight, Mr. Fowler identified one of the three folks that's here tonight as being the day-to-day onsite manager. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I guess what troubles me more than maybe, of all the things we've heard, the underage and things like that, is the activities that Chief described his officers witnessing were happening out in the open, on premise. And so if we have a day-to-day manager, I have concerns that this, these activities are going on and there's supposed to be somebody there that, you know, if I'm hearing Mr. Fowler in their defense, that they didn't know what was going on. So I'm struggling with that. I, you know, I was fully prepared tonight after looking at some of the information that we had gotten, that proceeding. I know that Mr. Fowler makes an impassioned plea there to give them some time to prepare. But we also have the evidence that's been presented tonight to us as a council. I know this isn't a court of law, but, and there are some charges out there pending on folks. I understand all that. But I am struggling with, our reputation as a city is on the line here with activities like this. And, you know, if we're, if we're going to put Chief Sparks in our police force in charge of law and order and rooting out criminal acts, and when they find it and they report it, it's up to us to hear it and act on it when it's within our jurisdiction to do so.
So you want to hear it tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My understanding is that we did follow the law as far as sending notification and that that notification was received on February 8th. Now, I'm not sure where the lag was in taking the matter seriously enough to hire you beforehand, and I'm sorry for that, for your involvement in this. But to, and then I guess, maybe I have a question. Is there a way to temporarily suspend their license until we have this hearing?
Our code gives city council wide berth to make any kind of decision when there has been violation of our code of ordinances, violation of state law or federal law to revoke, suspend, make any kind of determination. My only concern with making a temporary suspension pending the final outcome would be just simply a lacking in due process for the respondent.
Okay. So again, I find it unsettling that someone did not take action sooner in hiring an attorney if this is a severe, being as severe as this is. If the council's decision is to postpone this hearing, then I would want the license to be revoked until the hearing happens. And that's the only way I would be okay with postponing this hearing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Councilwoman Hudson?
Yes, I find myself kind of agreeing with my colleagues here to Councilwoman Miller's point, knowing and seeing that we did everything properly in our procedures and notifying. And again, not just maybe taking the situation seriously enough to move forward with legal. As, you know, I also do very much appreciate our small business community. I do want to make sure that we're running legally and operating to those standards. So I just, I find myself very challenged because I respect the police department and all the hard work that they, their officers do. And I very much hear what Chief Sparks is saying. So I think Councilwoman Miller's point, potentially doing a temporary, revoking it temporarily until we have the facts that matter. I don't necessarily want to... It's challenging. I find myself kind of cross right here just to be completely transparent.
Well, what I'm hearing is half and half, actually. Ms. Jordan, proceed.
And again, I would, I would allow the opportunity for cross-examination.
Yes.
Was the girl that the sheriff, that city police department sent in 20 years old?
Yes.
What was her name?
I don't have her name.
Who provided you the dates and times in which, as you said, weed was being smoked? That somebody was going undercover? They were rolling joints? There were gang symbols? What are the names of the officers so that we can subpoena them to come back and testify on Monday night? Can you give me the names and dates in which all those things happened?
I will object to that just based on ongoing investigation and to protect the innocent. These members of the law enforcement community are undercover agents. And again, as part of an ongoing investigation, if their identity is divulged, then this could create a compromised position for them and their safety.
All right. Chief, using assumed names of the people who've reported to you all these activities, could you give me the dates and times in which these activities were alleged to occur? Where they were? And who was involved?
Assumed names? I don't have assumed names. But the Douglasville Police Department Special Operation Unit started their operation on December 19th. And they went to the location after we have received several calls about the location.
From whom did you receive calls, Chief?
We get calls anonymous.
What were the dates of all the calls?
I don't have the dates. I just know on this date, December 19th, we went in there and we accomplished what we set out to do was the purchase of alcohol from that location.
And that was, you sent a girl 20 years old into the establishment? And you had her present what we call a vertical ID? And it's your testimony that it showed her date of birth as being under 21?
We made sure all of that is occurred before we even leave the police department, that all of those things are in place. And then it's up to the establishment. They know what the rules are. Whether it's square or rectangle, they should look at the date of birth, which was on the ID of the person. And they just didn't, they did not do it.
And who told you they did not do it?
My lieutenant. We got, we got tape of it by lieutenant.
All right, can you supply us the tape?
I don't have the tape right now, Mr. Fowler.
Is the tape in your possession?
It's not in my possession in evidence.
All right, can we see it between now and Monday? Or listen to it between now and Monday?
Yeah, we may can get that for you. We can get that.
Madam Chairman, what's happening is there are a host of things that have said to have occurred. And we don't have dates and times. And we're not able to get behind the dates and times. And I agree, everything he said is egregious. And in a proceeding of this nature where significant property rights are going to be withdrawn, we need to be able to cross-examine these individuals to find out exactly what happened when. This gentleman is going to take the stand as the day-to-day operator of this facility and say exactly what I summarized. I was summarizing from what he told me. So this cross-examination will result in me only hearing. I can't tell you the dates and times. I don't have them, it's somebody else. So maybe between now and Monday, we can actually interview the police officers and hear them say, and let them hear my client's response to those things.
I would just emphasize again that Chief Sparks testified to the dates, December 19th, 2023, being the date of the underage sale that was cited by the Douglasville Police Department, December 9th being the first time that the Douglas County Sheriff's Office went in to do their investigation inside the premises of, based on a tip of illegal drug use. And then January 20th being the other date that was already testified to.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Fowler, any comments?
Yes, ma'am. So Chief, you had several calls on December 19th or on or about December 19th concerning drug use onsite?
Not on that particular date. I'm seeing that we had received information prior to that and we put together the operation to go over there to verify the information that we were receiving from some people patronage of that location. So when we began to get that information, we put an operation together from our undercover operation, a special operation unit. And we went and what we was told became true. And after that...
But you can't tell me who told you that?
I told you, we get calls anonymous. I get calls on my phone, y'all need to go over there and check out wherever this place is, whatever that place is. And now what I do, I send the information to my special operation unit.
So excuse me for just a moment. I'd like to call for a recess, please, a five-minute recess. We have other items on the agenda. This looks like it's going to take a minute. I'd like to call for a recess, for a five-minute recess, and then we come back and resume. Thank you.
All right, so we are in recess for five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hudson, we'd be around here about to fall out.
Did you get a sandwich?
She didn't bring us.
I picked a really good A to B to everybody.
I know you did.
Okay, I'll switch up the next few seats for some.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, if I, if I may...
We'll bring, in a way for the attorney, or you want to go ahead? Because we have the council members here.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask, we have a couple of items on the agenda. If I can recess this item under public safety and go to the other one so that those that are waiting will not have to go through this, and they can just go ahead and go, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am, we can do that.
All right.
So we're out of recess. And we will commence with the rest of the meeting under public safety and go to your next item, Madam Chair, at your desire.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so the second item under public safety is hold a public hearing to consider a request for the alcoholic beverage license for the on-premises sale and consumption of wine and malt beverages and spirited liquors at the following establishment. Proposed license, The Kitchen Bar and Grill LLC. Location, eighty-two fifty-two Dallas Highway. Proposed outlet agent, Gregory Usery. The required fees have been paid into the Finance Department. Okay? Mr. Usery, if you will, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Gregory Usery, eighty-two fifty-two Dallas Highway, here in Douglasville.
Thank you, Mr. Usery. So you are applying for your alcohol license. I see that you have met the requirements on this application. Can you please tell us how, where is, this is a new establishment, a new license, correct?
Yes.
All right. Please tell us how are you going to proceed with making sure that you abide by all of the guidelines as it relates to training, checking ID, and so forth and so on?
Okay, first of all, we did email a policy, the Alcohol Serving Policy over. So I don't know if you have a copy of that in front of you. But one way we plan to abide by the laws and the orders and everything that's in place is that we have, we have a team of people in place. So I've hired an operations manager that covers all the operation. Yes, I'll be owning the place, but I have a manager there that will take care all the day-to-day from the morning till the evening. So we know how important that is. But also, we'll do continuous training and ongoing training. And that'll be just for even employment, because we know how employment change and people come and go. So we want to make sure that we are, making sure all our people are properly trained. So we do have that in place. We do have a policy in place of each and every one would be carded when they come in there. We understand the importance, and after hearing what I just heard a minute ago, I know the importance of making sure that we do that. So we will not be standing here before you in a different situation.
Thank you. Mr. Usery, what are your hours of operation?
Our hours of operations is seven AM in the morning. We'll be serving breakfast, and we'll be there some days to ten, and some days to nine, ten PM, and then some days to nine.
Okay. All right, I'd like to open up to our mayor and council for questions, please. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Usery, it's good to see you this evening. And I did have a question about the Kitchen Bar and Grill. What kind of cuisine are you, so you're going to breakfast? Are you going to break for lunch and then come back at dinner? Or are you going to stay up the entire time?
We're not going to break at all.
Oh, you're not going to break at all?
No, we're not going to break at all. We listen to the concern of the people. And so we understand that when we open at seven in the morning, we're not taking a break. We'll take a break when we close at night. Some of the days that most of the restaurants are closed. We plan on being open, you know, because we, we found a challenge with us. We want to eat out on Monday and Tuesday. A lot of places close.
Yes.
So I feel like, you know, we could, long-haul never closes like that. So we don't, we don't see a need to close at midday. We don't see a need to close during the week. You know, we just, we're going, we came here to do what we got to do.
Okay.
So we'll be serving different kinds of food. We got soul food Sunday. So if any of y'all want to come by and check us out on Sunday, we have an oxtails this Sunday, so we have oxtails on Sunday. And that's sort of like a buffet type on Sunday. And throughout the week, we'll have some other specialty days. We'll do something like a seafood day, we'll do some different things. So just want to bring some different flavor. We're not trying to duplicate anybody, we're trying to be authentic.
Make your own, Mark.
Bring our own, bring our own spin.
Yes, sir. And with the, the manager, the day-to-day, you said you're going to have an operations manager. And who would the person be over the alcohol license? The permit will be, the license will be in your name, correct? Is it? And so who is going to do the training and checking for the license for permits to make certain that those folks are not underage, being sold alcohol underage?
Well, operations manager is here. So she is here. She's been hired, and she's been along with us, consulting us the whole entire way. So she is here today. Her name is Shantaria McKeever. I want to make sure I'm saying her name right. But she's been on board with us for the last three or four months. Very versed in what we had to deal with, even getting licenses and everything. So she is on staffing, on board with us fully. So she is here tonight.
Does she have experience?
She, she have, can we ask her to come up?
Yes, please.
Yes, I was going to ask, would you like her to come up?
Yeah, we typically ask the person when they're coming in for the license if they've had experience in this type of business before, or if they bring that to the table. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Shantaria McKeever.
State your address as well.
Eighty-two fifty-two Dallas Highway.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, you can proceed with your questions.
Yes, ma'am, so do you have experience?
Yes, ma'am, I bring to the industry right now currently fifteen years of experience, along with a food and beverage degree, culinary science.
Okay, beautiful, all right.
That's all I had.
Thank you so much, thank you, Ms. Usery. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, ma'am, any other questions? Yes, Councilman Davis.
Well, I want to just reach out and say thanks again for coming into the historical New Horizons community. And I have a question, I'm hungry tonight. We're going to start eating before we have our council meeting. So will you deliver, or we have to pick up?
You say you're hungry tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's one question, Madam Mayor shook her head, said, yeah, I'm hungry too. So we're going to ask the city manager.
We will be able to deliver. We are on all Grubhub, delivery, Uber Eats, and DoorDash, and we will have online delivery as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have a place barbecue tonight.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to commend you all for embarking on this new, exciting adventure of being an entrepreneur and being a restaurateur in this climate. It's not for the faint of heart by any means. So I absolutely cannot wait. I was already creeping you guys, figuring out what your hours and trying to find a menu. So thank you for investing in our community, and thank you for your dedication. And we are really excited to see what you're going to do next.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. At this time, there will be a decision voted on on Monday. So if you return on Monday, you'll have answer then.
We have to have a public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, let me open a public hearing. I do apologize. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak for or against this establishment? If so, come forward. All right, I'd like to close this public hearing. If there are no other comments by our mayor and council, I would like to just invite you back on Monday for the vote. Thank you so much.
And if I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And council, I just wanted to say that, of course, this is an exciting process for all of us. And I know that we all, we oftentimes talk about how do we better Douglas? So I just wanted to share really briefly just some ways that we plan to impact the city of Douglasville. One of the things that we looked at was how do we make sure that our employees are self-sufficient? So we're coming in at a base pay of fifteen dollars for all of our employees. We have partnered with Truist Bank. We have our banker, our financial advisor, Mr. Desmond Waller, who is the VP, Truist Bank. We have some different perks that we'll be offering our employees, whether it's accounts. They would also have the opportunity to look at credit cards, or even loans, after they have established a great account. The other thing that we, that we're doing is that we are using environmentally safe, disposable products for our to-go. So we just wanted to make sure that when we came into the community, that we offered the biggest impact. And so we did send over a menu. I know that some of you were not able to attend our private luncheon on Monday. But we did send a menu, a full menu, and also we sent the menu for what's going to take place on Sunday. So we would certainly love to have you all. It's an exciting experience for us. And we, we've looked at vegetarian options, meatless options as well. So we want to be able to meet the needs of everybody in the community. So certainly hope that you all take advantage of it and come out and support.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And for the New Horizons community, this is embarking on something wonderful where individuals can sit and have a nice cuisine. Question, when is your first day for breakfast?
Tomorrow morning at seven AM.
All right, seven AM.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Come back on Monday for, for a vote on the license. Thank you, have a great evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no other items under public safety.
Yes, ma'am. So are we going to go back to the other item? How did we?
I would suggest you recess this committee and then come back so you can finish the items on your agenda.
Yes, and finish the entire agenda, and we go back.
All right, thank you so much. So now we'll move on then to the next agenda item, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one, two items tonight. Item A is authorize the mayor to sign the twenty-twenty-four loan agreement between the National Museum of the United States Air Force and the City of Douglasville for the period of April first, twenty twenty-four, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine, for display of an F-105D aircraft at the city's airplane memorial in Hunter Park. And Ms. Hampton will handle this.
Yes, sir, this is the annual agreement that you all requested to sign in order for us to have the airplane memorial at Hunter Park.
Ms. Hampton, you say annual, but we, we kind of moved that to a five-year deal, haven't we?
I'm sorry, five years. And that's really dependent upon the military. So they send those terms over to us. But we've had it for a while, and it was annual, and you're correct, Councilman Watts. They've moved that to a five-year agreement.
Okay. And, I mean, it's been there since I can remember. And this is just a routine thing and involves inspections and things like that. But we're not paying for this to be there, are we?
No, routinely, they do ask us to maintain it by keeping it painted. There are certain things that we have to do. But there is no monthly or annual cost that we have to pay to, keep it up.
Well, I, I think it's, it's a great landmark within our park. Does anybody have any comments about this particular item? Anybody? Go ahead.
Just something quick. I remember coming to Hunter Park my entire life as a child and seeing that memorial there. So I'm excited to see it continue to be there for all the next generations to come. And maybe when I have kids, if I have kids, they'll get to see it too.
I can marry them, you know, I'm ready with my license.
I'd love to, I'd love that the city could track down somebody that actually flew one of those settings and maybe do a little presentation at the plane one day where they can maybe talk about it and... Anyway, if there are no other comments or anything, I'm going to place this on the consent agenda for Monday?
Looks like it, yes. Okay.
Item B, appoint Devin Walker to the Hotel Two post of the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Jackson will handle this.
Thank you, Councilman Watts, Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. As Councilman Watts said, Ms. Devin Walker is interested in serving on the Hotel Two post of the Douglasville CBB. More fun fact about Ms. Walker, she used to serve on the board about eight years ago. So she's excited, she's back in the area and back being a general manager at the hotel. So she's excited to continue to serve. And there's no other individuals that are interested in serving for this Hotel Two post of the CBB Board.
I would just point out that we had a Zoom interview with Ms. Walker, and she's, she's great, she'll be a great asset to the board. Anybody have any ques... Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Which, which hotel?
She is currently at the, it's a hotel group, so it's a La Quinta Inn and Suites.
Oh, okay, okay, very good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? I'm going to ask that this appointment be placed on the consent agenda for Monday?
Looks like it's okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight on our Recreation and Culture and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move on with the rest of the committees. And I know we're in recess for public safety, but we should go through these committees pretty quickly. And we apologize for the inconvenience. I will move on to item fifteen, Technology Committee, chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no new business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hudson. Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, no business under Transportation tonight.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Burdanley, while you have the microphone, we can come out of recess and go back to your Public Safety Committee, if you don't mind taking that item back up again.
Yes, ma'am, would you like to go to staff reports, Madam Mayor?
The staff said they can wait until the end.
Actually, I was going to suggest that Mr. Bass can present on Monday. We don't have to have all of the staff here unless they feel as if they're learning something.
Okay.
I will say that.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
So we'll have them. Thank you, Mr. Bass, for your flexibility and your award-winning Parks and Recreation team. We see you out there, so thank you so much. But yes, Madam Chair, if you would mind, your public safety.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to convene back to Public Safety Committee. And thank you, Attorney Fowler, for being patient at this time. And we can proceed.
Chief, a couple more questions about the dates and times of the events for which you are seeking to have the license revoked. Is it December the nineteenth and January the twentieth?
Oh, yes, sir.
So those are the only two events, December the nineteenth, January the twentieth.
In December the ninth?
In December ninth.
What happened on December the ninth?
It's the Sheriff's Department that went in and did undercover operation. And that's the date that they observed a lot of things going on while, while they're in the establishment. So they were, I think they have films, and they were observing marijuana and other things being partaken of in the location. That's on December the ninth of twenty twenty-three. From the hours of twenty-one hundred to zero-zero-zero.
So that's nine PM?
Yes, sir.
So generally speaking, one of the grounds for revocation is on December the ninth, a person from the Sheriff's Department observed marijuana being consumed on site?
Yes, according to a report that I'm reading here that they advise, that they observed some people utilizing the smell of marijuana. And then on December the nineteenth, that's when we had did our undercover operation. And then what happened, we just got together because the Sheriff's Department was receiving information as well. That's how the two operations became direct together. Because some people was calling the Sheriff's Department, and they were calling us. So we did a joint operation.
Thank you. December the ninth, a Sheriff's Department representative smelled marijuana on site. That's it?
No. While conducting surveillance, I also noticed some people partaking in illegal narcotics hand-to-hand while agents were in Highlanders. So they are up, they see hand-to-hand sales while they were inside surveillance and filming what they were seeing.
Now, are there videos or recordings of that?
Sheriff's Department should have them.
Can we have those available between now and Monday?
I had to get with the Sheriff's Department, this is ongoing operation, you know.
No arrests were, but no arrests were made with respect to that? No charges were brought?
Oftentimes, when you do undercover operations, you just don't go in there and just arrest right then and there. It all depends. It may be, arrests may come three months down the road. It all depends on what type of information that we are receiving during the operation.
The next event is on December the 19th. And that was the circumstance in which Lauren Erp did not check the license of a girl that was 20 years old. Is that correct?
She checked the license. She checked them and stole it anyway. That's what I told you before. She checked. I gotta, she checked the license. She did what she was supposed to do other than not sell the alcohol.
All right.
So, she did check what she went ahead.
There's a person here who was a cook that was called to come in at the last minute. And you'll hear her explain more about that in a second. Do you know what they ordered that night? Do you have any idea in the world?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Do you know if they ordered food?
Probably more, I, I, I don't know that for sure. You have to talk to the, to the agents.
Was the citation given to Lauren Erp the same day that it occurred? That is, the service to her as a 20-year-old of the beverage?
Yeah, she was given a citation.
Thank you. And then the other event took place on January the 20th, 2024. And that's where three persons were arrested, Tyler Blair, Alan Henry, and Lisa Thornton. Is that correct?
I don't know all the names, but I know that the Sheriff's Department conducted, and some people were arrested, yes.
Can you, would you tell the council specifically what happened that night inside the restaurant?
January the 20th?
Yes, that's the night of the alleged cocaine arrest.
It wasn't alleged, they arrested them when they found cocaine. Patrons and staff observed openly smoking marijuana inside the restaurant. They observed what was believed to be several hand to hand drug transactions. They stopped individual leaving the restaurant and quit for a traffic violation. And then arrested that guy once they did surveillance of him leaving the place. And let them, usually let them go away from the place. So, if you stop somebody right there, it may harm your operation. So, they let them go away a little ways. They stopped them and they found the cocaine.
How many?
After observing the, the drug usage in, in the place.
Now, there were two places identical in general location. One of the restaurants is called Per Se. The other restaurant is Highlanders. The evidence we have was that all of that started in Per Se, not in Highlanders.
That's not the evidence I had. We went, we wasn't going to do anything at Per Se. We, the operation was for Highlanders. It wasn't for Per Se. So, our operation was conducted at Highlanders. So, you, you know, you bring in, I heard you earlier, you were talking about Per Se. That's the first time I ever heard anything about Per Se because all the agents were dealing with Highlanders. Now, I'm not saying we're not looking at other places, though. We're looking at a whole lot of people, lot, lot of other, uh, uh, locations. But that was the first time I ever heard anything about Per Se. All this information we have is dealing with Highlanders.
And on that night, January the 20th, your statement to the council is that someone was seen inside the premises smoking marijuana?
I'm saying to the council and to you and to the people there, that patrons and staff observed open, there was openly smoking marijuana inside the restaurant. They were observed of what was believed to be several hand to hand drug, uh, transaction. And that's when you mentioned some individual that was stopped leaving the place, which we had information that one of the cooks was selling cocaine. That's how, that's how distinct the information that we were receiving about this place. Is that the cook was selling cocaine. So, when we went into the operation, we looking for the cook. And guess what? We arrested the cook.
Now, did you know that he was not on duty that night?
I don't know who was on duty. I know he was there. I'm just, I don't know who was on duty that was working at the establishment. But, 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 but my guys were working and the Sheriff's Department were working.
What was the cook's name?
I don't have his name. You mentioned somebody's name. I think you said they stopped cook leaving the restaurant. I don't know if it's the cook or that's his nephew cook.
What evidence do you have that there was gang activity going on? Hand signals, bloods, colors? What evidence is there of that in this restaurant?
This is from our gang investigators. Our narcotic, our narcotic officers and the county narcotic officer are also gang trained. So, this is, is what they are observing. I, again, you know, I, I wasn't there, but I'm, I'm, I get briefed.
Have you looked to determine if there have been any past actions of misconduct by Highlander in the 15 years that this gentleman has operated that restaurant?
I know Highlanders was on Fableton Road and they moved from Fableton Road, I think, to over there by the Walmart. So, you know, it doesn't matter if, if they didn't have any, I could look at, I could go pull that record and find out. But the, the, the point is, at this date, these dates, what we talking about?
Is all of your activity based on a confidential informant telling you about information going on there?
No, it's based on officers going in there and seeing. It's based on we getting information from people advising us what's going on in there. And then our officers go in there with cameras and they see. So, all our information is not based on just people calling in, making citizens a complaint because the citizens, they want a place to run right. You know, so they make complaints. So, we send all people in these places to make sure things are done right.
Have you had complaints from a former employee who worked there that was fired?
I don't know who worked that, I don't know that.
Do you have complaints from a former employee named Davis who worked there for a number of years and got fired?
I don't, I don't know. E, e, even if he did get fired, he come, the, the bottom line of what we talking about here, we get complaint and we go verify it.
Let me ask you this. Was there an occasion when you convened a meeting of all of the alcohol licensees?
Yes.
And you met with Highlanders?
Yes.
And at that time, you told one of the members of the management team that you had no problem with them?
I advised them that they were one of the, one of the only ones that did come to the meeting. Because I had had several meetings. And prior to that, the last one, I had other establishments to call. You know, at that particular time, see, I'm not going to just sit there and tell you what I have going on with you. That's what I, that's what I do. If I did have something going, I'm not just going to tell him, yeah, everything. I may say everything is cool, but I may have some information that things may be going on in that. I'm not going to tell you.
When was the first time you heard that Highlander had a problem?
I can't tell you the exact date. My, my, my testimony was that we received information of things that was going on inside that establishment. Now, the exact date, I don't know, but I turned it over to special ops. And, and, and my testimony is to you is that when we receive it, guess what? The county got the same information. So, when, so when we got information, the county got the information. So, we got together and worked the operation together.
That was all within the last 90 days, wasn't it?
Yes.
In fact, it was more recent than that. It was early December of 2023 when all this started.
Well, let's see. December, now, we may have got the information, sometime we get the information that they're working on something. And then they may go get, you know, sometime it takes a little while to get the operation going. You know, you just don't, it just don't start it right when somebody say it, it takes, it may take some time to get things moving in the right direction, like.
Basically, 60 days ago is when all this started with this business. So, they got a 14-year, 10-month history of being good citizens in this community.
Now, I could pull the records. I don't got all the records that say about being all good citizens. It don't take but one bad, one, 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 one operation. And, 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 and that just, uh, just can probably everything else. So, now I could go pull the records, see how many calls we have for service at that location. I've been looking at a few of them here. And, you know, intoxicated people and battery and unruly patrons and car keys. So, you were talking about a zone patrol. See, the zone patrol is because we have issues at a location. That's why we put zone patrols on there. So, so, yeah, so I could pull that. And, you know, I don't have that with me right now, but we could pull it.
Yeah, I'm looking at all those records. Most of those are zone patrols where they're driving by because you always drive by.
A zone patrol usually put on because we just have incidents that, or we trying to prevent incidents from happening?
All right. Madam Chairman, that's all for this witness. I'll have three witnesses whenever you're ready.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jordan, do you have any comments at this time? Attorney Jordan?
Um, I do not have any witnesses, but I will be cross-examining at least one of them.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So, to proceed, thank you very much. The first witness will be the owner of Highlanders. This is Mr. Nick McCullough. Give them your name and address. And he'll just address the council.
My name is Nicholas McCullough, 413 Robinson Road, Peachtree City, Georgia. First off, I would like to make a, a statement for the record, if I could, please. I am both shocked and disappointed by my treatment, being a business owner in Douglas County for 15 years, of being sent a letter and given five days to try to find someone to represent me. And then the letter doesn't even tell me why this is happening to me. So, I have no way whatsoever to build any kind of defense. I called everyone I could call and found that Mr. Fowler would be the best person to talk to. And that's when I heard him. You guys are being asked to suspend or to revoke my alcohol license. What that means is that you're considering destroying my business. A business that my family has built over 15 years in this county and in this city. And it sounds good to say, you know, you're going to suspend something or revoke something, but you're talking about destroying people's lives. For 15 years, we've done nothing wrong. If we're to believe Chief Sparks, we're to believe that for 14 years or more that we've been, we've been good citizens and done what we're supposed to. And all of a sudden, now I'm running a drug house and a gang house. It's preposterous. If you listen to what he says, he says supposed marijuana, supposed drug actions. They don't know what that stuff was. There's no way in the world anybody with any kind of business sense would allow people to come into their establishment and use drugs or sell drugs or let gang members hang around. And when we have trouble there, we C.T. people to get them away. Because if I allow that kind of activity, it runs away anybody that would come there that would pay us money. It doesn't do me any good. And, and to have to come in here and try to defend myself against accusations. All these are accusations. It, it doesn't matter it's coming from a police chief. His words should carry no more weight than my word. There's no proof, no one has done anything wrong. You're innocent in this country until you're proven guilty. This, this cook worked for me part-time. As soon as we found out what happened to him, we fired him. I don't want that stuff in, in my business. It doesn't, it doesn't do me any good. What purpose would it serve me to allow gang members and people openly using drugs inside of our restaurant? It's, it just makes no sense. You have to look at people's history. We have a history of being good, responsible citizens in this city. I've paid over $200,000 in excise tax and alcohol tax to this city since I've been in business. And almost half a million dollars in sales tax to the state. I'm a business owner, I own several businesses. We run this business because we want to provide a good place for people to eat. We're known for good food. Many people from the county come there, many police officers, many of the WSA guys. And we are being portrayed as some kind of a criminal organization. My character has been assassinated in here tonight with zero proof. No proof. Someone can just say something and the accusations alone are so damning, you never get over it. Everybody in here can hear everything that's being said about me, and I have no way to defend myself. This, this process is absolutely a violation of my rights and is wrong. I'll do my best to defend myself with what I can. But how can you expect someone to defend themselves when, when they come in here, not even know what they're defending themselves against? Your letter said nothing about what we were going to be charged with. How could we ever find out anything? Mr. Fowler found out yesterday what was happening. So, here we are scrambling around for a day and a half trying to figure out some way to defend ourselves against this. This is just, this whole process is wrong.
Ms. Jordan?
I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Ms. Jordan. Brought up the fact that we are a, we're not a smoking establishment, it's not true. She's looking at my original application. When we first opened the business, I did not want smoking. And we, my wife and I ran the place ourselves. I built houses during the day and I go at night work. We built this thing from the ground up with our hands. Everything was designed, the, the menu was built by us. Everything was us. And when we first opened, they wanted to know what, what crazy person was going to open a restaurant up across from Taco Mac and beside Tops. I said, well, here I am. And we have fought COVID, we have fought everything to survive. And now here I am, trying to be taken down and destroyed over a bunch of accusations that, that there's absolutely no, no proof of. But we changed from a non-smoking establishment to a smoking establishment about 11 years ago. I signed paperwork, it was filed with them. What they've done with it, I don't know. At that point, you cannot enter that building unless you're 21 years old. So, the police sends someone in underage to perform a sting, breaking the law themselves. Is it okay for the police to break a law in order to try to entrap somebody? Is that okay in this country now? This whole thing makes no sense.
Do you not have any questions for him? Okay. Do you have any documentation that you changed your alcohol license to indicate smoking?
No, ma'am, it was filed with you guys.
So, you didn't keep a copy of that?
No, it's been, it's been 11, 10, 11 years ago. I'm sure I got a copy of it somewhere, but Lord knows where it would be. I've moved it three times since I've opened this place.
I'm going to show you what the city has identified as your alcohol license application. Can you verify that this is your handwriting?
It is my handwriting. That's from, from the first time we opened. From the time that we filed this and to now, we changed to a smoking establishment. You're using my first application when I first opened, when I was non-smoking. So, this is not relevant.
Would it surprise you to know that the city does not have any additional documentation from you other than business license applications?
I wouldn't know that.
And I'm going to show you another page.
What is that document with my letterhead on it? I have to write back to you there.
The document with the letterhead is your certification of your address for the past 14 years. Is that your signature on it?
It sure is.
And I'm going to show you page six. Is that your signature there?
What is this, what is, am I looking at?
That's the signature page for the application. And I'm happy to show you every single page.
I don't need to see every single page. But what you're showing people is the application in which I was non-smoking, but it was changed to smoking.
Okay, and on this application, it states, are you familiar with the city of Douglasville ordinances, state laws and regulations governing, governing the operations? state laws and regulations governing, governing the operations of this type of business? And what did you check here?
I checked yes.
Do you agree to abide by such ordinances, laws and regulations? What did you check next about?
I checked yes, and we have abided by them.
And that's your signature on this following page that is notarized.
Of course.
So you, you stated that you knew all of the rules and regulations related to alcohol licenses and operations. Is that, that, that your testimony?
I don't understand your question.
You, you stated on this application that you knew and understood and agreed to abide by all rules, regulations related to operating this establishment with an alcohol license.
Yes.
So. And you don't have any documentation that you changed your alcohol license?
No. If I do, I don't know where it's at. Like I said, it's been at least, at least eleven years ago that we changed.
Is Lauren Earp employed by Highlanders currently?
She is.
Was there any discipline done against her for her infraction of selling to a minor?
I don't believe she sold to a minor. What, what she told me was when she looked at the, at the license, that she had just recently turned twenty-one years old. So I don't believe that she did anything wrong.
So you, you gave no disciplinary action against your employee? And you said Tyler Blair was a part-time cook?
Yes, ma'am.
And he was the one arrested for cocaine?
I guess so.
Would it surprise you to know that the Douglas County Sheriff's Office reported that your cook Tyler Blair was right back to work when he got out of jail?
I don't think that's true. You'd have to ask my brother about that. And if, and if he was, he did nothing wrong at, at our establishment that we know of. He was arrested somewhere off-site and had we known or thought that he was selling drugs, he would have been fired that second.
So nobody, your, your testimony is nobody on site knew that he had in his possession at Highlanders a scale, distribution baggies and a, and a scoop spoon along with the cocaine?
How would anyone know what's in his pockets? How would anyone know that?
And is the, is Tyler Blair currently employed?
No.
When was the last time he worked?
I don't know.
And you're the agent outlet manager and you don't, you don't know who works at Highlanders?
I don't, I don't set the schedule for the kitchen. The kitchen manager does.
All right. That's, that's all for now. Thank you.
Question, if I may. What, would you explain to the council what procedures you follow to ensure compliance with the alcohol regulations?
Of course. Um, one thing that we do that I don't think anyone else does in Douglas County is we hire an independent company called Bar Matrix. And what they do is they come in, they talk to employees that serve alcohol. They teach them how to spot fake licenses. They teach them how to pour drinks properly. They teach them how to spot people that are, uh, over intoxicated or have had too much or that they've been drinking before they come into the establishment. And I have to, we pay separately to have that done and they're certified to do that. Underage drinking is, is something for me that's particularly, um, distressful to me because, uh, my oldest child was ran over by a car by somebody who was drinking underage. It, um, crushed her face and, uh, she had to have a, a craniotomy and she's disfigured over it now. We do not serve anyone underage. You look back at my fifteen-year history. Now, if Lauren Earp made a mistake, it was a mistake. It wasn't done purposely if she did so. We weren't able to see the license. We weren't able to talk to anybody. There again, it's accusations with no proof. She has, she has not been convicted of anything. Same, same as, same as the cook or anyone else. In no way do I condone drug use anywhere, much less at my business. It does no good for me. In no way do we conduct gang members at the business. It's ridiculous to say. I run a good business. We run a business for the, for the, for the, for the community and we follow all the laws and rules.
Were you aware of any misconduct on the dates of December ninth, twenty twenty-three, December the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, or January the twentieth, twenty twenty-four?
No, sir.
If you had the least idea that something like that was happening, would you tell the council what you would do?
If we had the least idea that anyone was selling drugs, using drugs in the open or anything else, we would, if we would fire them or call the police. Anytime that we've ever had any trouble with anyone at our establishment breaking the law, we call the police and we get rid of them because it damages my business not to. No one's going to come in there and pay money to sit and eat and drink if people's openly using and selling drugs. It's just, it, it, this does not have the ring of truth to it. And to destroy somebody's business over accusations, I just don't understand how anyone might even consider it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle McCullough, please, if you can come around, sir. Kyle, state your name, give them your address, and then I'll ask you some questions.
My name is Kyle McCullough. My address is one oh six three five Woodruff Road, Fairburn, Georgia.
Tell the council what your employment is.
Manager.
How long you been there?
About five years.
What are your responsibilities?
I do, uh, ordering, inventory, um, front of the house scheduling, um, and just day-to-day management.
And what responsibilities do you have for ensuring that your staff comply with the regulations concerning alcohol consumption?
Uh, we, we hire a company to come out and go over all the rules, regulations, train them, um, to spot things like that.
Does your business close?
Closes at, uh, two AM. We usually do last call around one twenty.
What's last call?
Last call.
Last call. So have you had, or have you been informed by any person, sheriff's department, police department, staff members with the city of Douglasville, or any other person, that there was evidence that your company was violating the alcohol regulations?
No, in the fifteen years we've been open, we've never heard any complaints, any problems whatsoever.
What time do you work?
Yeah, this varies. I just kind of go in, um, as needed. Sometimes I go in there today, sometimes I go in there night.
Talk about the evening of December the ninth, twenty, or the day of December the ninth, twenty twenty-three. You probably don't remember if you were there that particular day since these dates are new to you and me. But has there been a pattern to your knowledge of marijuana consumption on-site while you were there?
No, absolutely not. Absolutely not. Um, if, if, if we ever, any bar that you go to in the United States, you're going to have a bad apple in there every now and then. So if, sometimes I'll see somebody doing this. And I'll go over there and look and see what they're doing and they might be rolling marijuana. It's, it's very rare that that happens. When I see that, I kick them out immediately. No question out. You got to leave the bar right now.
How many times has that happened over the years?
Not very often.
Have any city of Douglasville police officers come to your establishment?
We have many police officers come to establishment and regularly. We have a Carroll County judge who comes seven days a week into that bar. And he sits there all day long. His name is Walt. We have many Douglas County, we have many Douglas County police officers that come and they love the place. We have Keith and Jared who own Best Bonding. They're in there every single day. And they wouldn't frequent a bar that's selling drugs and, and stuff like that. It would be bad for their business and reputation. It's just not true what we're being accused of. And two, if I may say, I would like to invite every one of you guys to come out. I will cover your tab. So you can see this personally, that none of this is true. None of it. And I know Mr. Sparks has to throw gasoline on a match. That's his job. You know, he's a good guy. I got a lot of respect for Mr. Sparks. We've met before. And like I said, when he called the meeting, uh, for all the bars in the city to come, only two people showed up and Highlanders was one of those people because we comply with the police department. Always have and always will. But, you know, we don't have a drug problem there. We have many good people there. I actually had two people come to me there and said, I was contemplating suicide. I was going to kill myself. And I found this bar and this bar saved my life. And that's why me and my brother, we pushed this bar. We want it to, to be a part of the community. You know, we donate money to, uh, battered women's shelter. We made a hundred and sixty, uh, meals for Thanksgiving for people that couldn't afford meals. We, uh, donate to, to the sheriff. We do a lot for the community. And we're, we're not at all, I don't know where these accusations came from. It makes no sense to me.
What kind of employee is Lauren?
Lauren is one of my best employees. And, uh, she called me crying about this situation, about the, uh, the license. And we push, uh, my brother and I push, you know, always check IDs. It doesn't matter if they look like they're sixty, if they come there, check their ID. And, uh, she said, I looked at the ID. And she said that she had turned twenty-one. She was twenty-one and a day. She said, I looked at it twice. And Mr. Sparks, uh, testifies that if it's a sideways, um, uh, license, that it indicates that you're underage. That's not true. That's false. What you have to do, if you're eighteen and you get this, it may be, uh, you might turn, uh, you might have a five-year license. You might turn twenty-one, you know, a few years. You still have a good license. So you look at the date and you look at the picture and if face matches the face and the date's good, it's a legitimate license. She swears that, that the license was, says that she was twenty-one years old and a day. And she said she checked, checked it twice and I believe her.
All right, um, December the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, was Tyler Blair working that day?
Uh, was that the day that he, uh, was arrested the night? Okay. I believe he was cooking that night. I believe he was.
All right. And you know what time he left?
I don't. I was, I was actually not there that night. I was at a birthday party. But from what I understand, he got pulled over around three in the morning or something like that, well after we were closed.
All right, I'll come back to that in just a second. Was there a time when you had a meeting with the sheriff and he said something about, I'm not worried about your company?
Well, yeah, I just pointed out some things. I said, you know, is there anything that I can work on? You know, should I do anything different to make us a safer bar? And he told me, he said, well, no, he said, you're less of my worries.
What about smoking? When did you become a smoking bar?
Um, I don't remember the exact date. I know we started out as a non-smoking bar. We hired a manager named Larry Baker. He recommended that we, uh, do a smoking bar. So we went through the process to become a smoking bar.
Okay, your witness.
What, what was the name of the judge that you mentioned was there every day? Walt?
His name is Walter. Uh, yeah, he goes by Walt. Uh, his last name starts with an L. I can't, uh, think of the name. His, his last name, Lavelle, or I'm not really sure what his last name is.
Would you be surprised to know that there's no such judge named Walt in Carroll County?
Walt?
Walt.
Walter?
Walter. No, neither one.
He's a juvenile judge.
And you were not present on January twentieth, twenty twenty-four at Highlanders?
Is that the date that TY got arrested on Highway five?
That's the date, that's the date, um, where you just testified that your cook was on duty?
You know, I was at a, I was at a, a, um, a birthday party. So I'm not sure if he was cooking or not. I'm, I'm not really sure. I believe he may have been, but I, I can't be a hundred percent certain.
You can't be certain of anything that happened that night because you weren't there?
Correct.
All right, that's all.
That's all for this witness. Thank you. And Kristy H. please. As I indicated, she's coming in at the last minute, called to come tend, so she probably would have dressed somewhat differently. But thank you for coming. Would you state your full name and address?
Kristy H. thirty-nine eighty-nine Bearden Lane, Douglasville, Georgia, three zero one three five.
How long you lived here?
Uh, all my life.
What's your employment?
I am kitchen manager at Highlanders.
How long you been there?
Um, since May of twenty twenty-three.
All right, let's go to the, the day of December the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, when Lauren Earp was given a citation for underage serving alcohol. Would you explain to the council what you understand?
Um, what I witnessed is, um, I was, I cooked their food. They did order food. I can't remember exactly what they ordered. Um, but I witnessed as I was taking boxes in and out the door, the cop came back in and sighted her. She was crying and visibly upset. She said she checked the ID. She was twenty-one years old, might have been for a day. And she was visibly upset. I tried to calm her down and that is when she called Kyle.
Would you describe to the council what the company's policy is about checking, checking licenses?
We check, we check IDs for everybody, no matter what they look like.
So would you also explain to the council what the general environment is of the business? You've heard the chief describe an atmosphere that sounded like it was inappropriate. Would you tell the council?
What I've experienced, being there, being kitchen manager, we are a close-knit family. We, we strive to serve the community, serve good food. And just be an overall wholesome atmosphere for people to come in, drink, eat food and watch a sports game or attend an event.
What about the enforcement of regulations concerning alcohol consumptions and serving to minors?
Um, we do not serve to minors. We check IDs. Whether they're vertical or horizontal, you check them. You check the year, date of birth and that, the picture. They have to match up.
Now, with respect to the arrest of the three persons on the, I guess it's late in the evening on January the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, were you have to be working that day?
I was not working. I have currently been in the hospital undergoing surgery, so I was not working. I do know he was working that night and I found out his arrest while I was in the hospital. Um, and it was, he was arrested when we were not closed off of Highway five somewhere, when we were closed.
When it happened, when you were?
When we were closed, not in business. It happened around three o'clock and I was informed like four or five o'clock that morning.
Have you ever seen drug consumption by him or anything any appropriate like that at the establishment?
No.
What was your view about what happened when you heard that it occurred?
I'm stressed out because I am again under medical leave and can't attend my kitchen.
Did it surprise you that he would engage?
Yes, and it's very much surprised me and disappointed me.
Had you seen any similar conduct like that going on within the staff or any patrons who were in the establishment? Never seen it?
No. And I'm in and out that kitchen when I'm there all the time.
And you're under oath before this counsel?
Yes.
All right. That's all. One minute.
Um, I don't have any questions for this witness. Thank you.
I'd hope to be able to subpoena Lauren to attend and to get additional information. But we are proceeding tonight. That's all we have in our rest at this point. I would ask, however, that we be given the opportunity to present additional evidence on Monday if we can discover it between now and then. Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Attorney Fowler. Yes, sir. Ms. Jordan, do you have any other comments at this time?
I would just like to make some closing remarks, um, quickly in respect of everyone's time. Um, serving alcohol in this city, as you all know, is a, it's not a right. As the respondent has mentioned, it's a privilege. Um, there have been allegations of criminal activities that were witnessed by respected members of the law enforcement community as part of an ongoing pending investigation. Uh, these criminal activities may not happen daily. They may just happen on certain days and they may have just happened on certain days where law enforcement personnel were present at the scene. Um, but the fact that they've happened at all is enough to support a revocation. And just because it's recent does not make it okay. If they operated properly in the past, that's, that's great and we appreciate their cooperation. But the recent activities are what have prompted the Douglasville Police Department and the Douglas County Sheriff's Department to initiate and conduct an ongoing investigation into the activities that have taken place at Highlanders. And you heard Mr. Kyle McCullough and you heard, you heard Mr. Kyle McCullough testify that he did not punish the employee that served to a minor. Not only did he not punish them, she still works there. She's still continuing to serve in our community. Now, her server's license may be in jeopardy as a result of whatever happens in her pending court case. Her court case goes, um, in front of the municipal court on March twentieth. Now, the agent outlet manager, which is Mr., Mr. McCullough, um, Mr. Nick McCullough, is responsible for everything that happens at that facility. But he's never on-site and he testified to that. He does not handle the day-to-day. Our city code says that the agent outlet manager definition is the person who does or will actually manage or operate an alcoholic beverage store or a pouring outlet on a day-to-day basis. An agent may be the same or different from the owner and licensee of the store. But this agent outlet manager is actually Mr. Nick McCullough, who is not present on. But this agent outlet manager is actually Mr. Nick McCullough, who is not present on a day-to-day basis. Mr. Kyle McCullough is present on a day-to-day basis. But his name was never on any application that the city has as far as being an agent outlet manager. And he's taken no responsibility for the day-to-day actions. In fact, that may actually be a violation in and of itself because the agent outlet manager is supposed to be there on a day-to-day basis. They cannot delegate that task to any other individual. But even though Mr. Kyle McCullough is the manager and is supposed to oversee the day-to-day operations, even though he's not the agent outlet manager, he has testified that on January 20th, 2024, he wasn't there. He was at a birthday party. So he doesn't know anything that happened on that night, including what his cook, who was on duty that night, was doing. So he testified that while he was working, the cook was working. Chief has testified that that individual was arrested for cocaine possession. And not only for possession, but possession with the intent to distribute. Now, I, I don't know about the general patronage of Highlanders as far as specific individuals who go there, but the juvenile judge in Carroll County is Thomas Palmer. There's no one named Walt that's a judge in Carroll County. So numerous occasions this evening, the respondent has been caught in a lie. Who are you going to believe? The respondent who continues to lie under oath or a respected member of the law enforcement community? That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Attorney Fowler.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear tonight. I know none of this has come out in any depth. But many of us have been in situations, and I've certainly experienced it over the years in my job, where a former employee can create a devastating nightmare. And over the recent years, a former employee, whose last name is Davis, a female, has created extraordinary problems. Nothing that has risen to the level of being pertinent to what we're here for tonight, but it's just been problems behind the scenes. It's like the stuff that sometimes happens on Facebook. And we believe at some level that's behind what's happening here tonight. And I understand the rule about informants, you can't get their names. The city should and does, with the sheriff's department, protect those individuals. But where we are is, it's sort of like Pharaoh's army. When all the children of Israel had crossed the Red Sea, they look up and they see the flood that's coming this way. That's sort of happened to us in the last 48 hours. All kinds of accusations are being made, but when they're boiled to its barest terms, December the 9th, December the 19th and January the 10th. A person who worked in the kitchen as a cook for the company was arrested at 3:00 AM, not during work hours, for cocaine possession. It's a crime for him to have done that. It would have been a violation of the ordinance if any of that had happened on site. But there's no testimony that it happened on site. Is he a bad guy? Sure. Will he ever work there again? Absolutely not. None of us would hire him. But does, is that a basis for taking away the license? That, the more serious of all these is this concept of cocaine possession used and intent to distribute. Is that a basis that this person did that? And the counsel has to decide. And the ordinance gives you a lot of flexibility with respect to that. But what we would say is absolutely not. With a company that's doing excellent work in the community, for those who are inclined to visit, 14 years and 10 months worth. And I would respectfully say no. I don't know what went on going back in reverse order on December the 19th, but Lauren made a mistake. And she has not been fired because she made a mistake presumably. And if she did, is that a grounds to take away this business's license when that's the only recorded event of its ever happening? She cried, talked to a fellow employee and said, I can't believe this has happened. I've been cited, but I checked. And if the chief, who has that license, it's in evidence, showed it to us, I would believe him. If he just told me, I wouldn't have to see it. And he told you that it had the wrong date on it? Or it had the date that would indicate that she was under 21 years old? It is a, it is a smoking establishment. The state, the city may have believed that it was a no-smoking establishment so that they sent in an underage person. That's something that the counsel will have to evaluate as to whether or not that is a meritorious claim for using that as a basis for dealing with this company's license. With respect to the first event on December the 9th, the concept of misconduct going on, you heard from one of the witnesses, one of the employees, Kyle, who said that there are occasions where something like that may be happening and he kicks them out. And that is because they don't do a background check on everybody who walks in there. What happens is they come in and sometimes they're bad people. I wish we didn't have any in the city of Douglasville. But we do. And they need to be dealt with both our city. They do a great job all the time, except in this one circumstance, chief. The question about what the owner, what Nick has done or not done, may have been confused by me. And if so, I apologize. He goes there regularly. He is the agent outlet manager and he has been for 15 years and he's known it for 15 years. He just doesn't deal with the assigning of schedules. He's there. And I could, I think you can see from the passion that he exhibited in this, that he is deeply concerned. You have remedies under the ordinance other than termination and closing down this business. We don't believe any action is appropriate. We ask you to preferably consider this over the weekend. And we will talk about whether or not we can have this lady come testify that we think made a mistake. We would never offer the cook who did this inappropriate conduct, except for the purpose of having him explain. I never did that ever. And if we can find him, we'll certainly attempt to. Never did it on the premises. I will say this, my daddy served in public service for 20 years, 14 years in the legislature. I won the state track meet when I was sophomore by myself because my dad was out doing political stuff. I know the sacrifices you make. And when you get a case like this, it makes your job and the sacrifices you have to make even more difficult. So we all appreciate you and your fair handedness on an ongoing basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Madam Mayor, I do not have any comments. I have heard Attorney Fowler ask if he could present additional evidence on Monday. I'd like to see that that is, is done on Monday. At this time, I'd like to say there aren't any other items under public safety.
Yes, ma'am. Can we ask any questions or bring anything forward or you want us to wait?
I don't have any other questions or comments unless you do. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I'd had a couple of questions. We thank everyone. This, like I said initially, is very sensitive topic and very serious. And we're just, it's unfortunate that we're here on all sides. And we're just, we're trying to do the best that we can. I will say to the McCollins and, and Highlanders that we appreciate your time in the city and what you've given to the community. And just know that you are not targeted. This is part of what the chief does throughout the city. And in fact, I'll name these restaurants or just establishments because it's been public record that we've had some concerns with Allure Lounge, Finn and Feathers, The Crew, Thunder Zone. And they're called sting operations. So if we get a complaint, then the police department acts upon those complaints. Um, and they do traditional sting operations with even massage parlors or, you know, just going to see if they're really just doing massages at Green Tree Spa and nothing else. So it's, it's routine, but especially if they receive a complaint, they will follow up on the complaint. So it isn't that they're targeting your establishment. It's just part of what they do as law enforcement. But the couple of questions that I had for Ms. Jordan is the initial application that was presented to the city or turned into the city, what's the date on that application that you have?
Um, it is 2011. Um, the date on the signature page, the specific date is March, first day of March 2011 is the notarization date of that application.
Okay, so the initial application was 2011 that said it was non-smoking, was a non-smoking establishment. But the owner is saying that they did have a subsequent application that permitted them for smoking maybe eight or 11 years ago.
That's right. And I had the finance department verify that this was the only application on file. They sent me everything that they had, which included this. And then the business license application from 2017, where they moved from Douglas Boulevard to Concourse Parkway. And the business license application doesn't mention anything about smoking or non-smoking.
Okay, so we don't have that updated information if there is something. Now, the process, it does seem like this is a, a speedy process. So maybe under legislation, intergovernmental or how our policy, city manager, I'm not certain. If we can look into a five-day turnaround to see maybe if there should be more time or if how that process, you know, that's something maybe we can look at when we do our, our new budget hearings coming in June. I'm not certain. It just seems like a fast turnaround for me.
I, I think what your attorney is saying is that that relates to one portion of it. But as far as your deliberation, I think that you can extend that as, as long as you want to. Am I correct on that, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, ma'am. The notice provision requires us to give at least five days notice before the hearing takes place. But it would be at the discretion of counsel to defer any action or to postpone anything in making a decision.
Yes, ma'am. So my, my concern is not for our deliberation time. My concern is for the applicant or the person who's being accused of something, their timeframe. If they're giving something in five days, you know, and I know too, when I get important information, you look at it, but five days seems to be pretty fast to establish, an opportunity to establish having an attorney and seeing. And did we, in the letter, do we not specifically say what your concerns, what the city's concerns are? Or is it just a general? Because I think that is a legitimate concern to if you have a blanket letter and you don't know what you're being accused of, you, how can you prepare for that in, in that timeframe?
It's specified in the letter.
It is?
It's in your attachments. Yes, ma'am. It's specified in the five days is minimum, correct, Ms. Jordan?
The, the five days is minimum, yes. And, and the letter actually went out in more time than that. And the first advertisement run, ran on February 3rd. It was actually posted to Facebook by Richard Segal on that same day, February 3rd. So the, and the, and the respondent actually reached out to, I believe it was deputy chief by, by phone to discuss that before the letter had even been mailed.
Okay, so information, so they, they were made aware of what the concerns were?
Yes, and they, they had also reached out to the, the finance department, which was that, that Monday, which was the day the letter was mailed out. They reached out to the finance department for information because I guess they had seen the advertisement.
Okay, so I just, I'm just trying to get in, just ascertain how long they had information.
Well, if it's your desire to change the notice time in the future, you just need to amend the order.
Okay, so I think we can look at that just to see if it's enough time. Like, you know, maybe even when you're terminating a job or something, you give people two weeks to kind of get some more information, not certain. Um, but just something that we can look into. And so, so you're saying that it was specifically spelled out what the concerns were? And I think that's all I had is just trying to get timeframes.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, if I may ask, we have our attorneys on site. I have stated I don't have any other comments. I think at this point, if our attorneys have any questions, let our attorneys speak with each other. We will have evidence that will come forward on Monday. Mr. Fowler.
Madam Chair, can I have asked one question?
Is it related?
Yeah, just a clarification question because I, I feel like I heard two different responses from the defense regarding the license. On one hand, I heard somebody saying that it was, that the license presented was one, was, that the person was 21 years and one day, but I also heard a mistake was made. So I'm not asking for clarification now, but by Monday, I think that seems to be something that's very easily researched as to what the, what the birthday was on that license. Is that, is that an appropriate question?
It has to come from them because we can't see it.
Yes, Ms., I'm sorry, Mayor Protem. I think at this point, I have no other comments under public safety. I think if you have any other comments, you need to direct those to our attorney.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments? All right, we're just trying to get it.
One thing, Madam Mayor, the notice did not contain a detail of the charges. The notice went out earlier than what I thought because I'm so new to the case. Maybe it was nine days as Miranda just suggested. But I don't think the notice says these are the things you've alleged to have done. But as the chairman said, I'll speak with Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Madam Mayor, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm not.
So we can have the attorneys give us the letter. I'd like to see it, to see what was.
Because there's going to be additional evidence that will be provided on Monday. The letter is in your attachment.
I don't see it.
There is, the letter is in your attachment. I would recommend at this time, if you have any questions, please direct them to our attorney.
All right.
Thank you.
I know it's getting late, so we appreciate that. Um, so we will, is that all you have under public safety? Yes, ma'am. So we'll move on to other business. Do we have any other business from counsel? You're welcome. Any other business from council members? I don't see any updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dodson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Our chief of police, Chief Sparks.
Yes, we'll be having our fourth annual Day of Unity at the police department at 10 o'clock to 11:30 on Saturday. And we have a light refreshment so we, like all the citizens to come out and hear how and what we're doing to promote unity and keep our community safe.
Thank you so much, Dr. Sparks. We appreciate that, chief. Our city manager, Ms. Harp, Ms. Hampton.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. We will defer our staff report until Monday. And now we come down to the portion of the council meeting where we have comments from citizens and delegates. And you have five minutes to talk to us about any business that is pertaining to the city of Douglasville. If you have any concerns, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. Thank you. I don't see any. If we don't have any other business to come before us this evening, then this meeting is adjourned.